May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, it is now seven o'clock. Demi, could you please hold rule?
Here.
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 All right, we have a call, if everyone could please stand for the pledge.
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to approving tonight's agenda. Matt, any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, we would like to remove, uh, underneath this, a slide of eight.
All right. And for the executive session, we said ten minutes each?
Uh, approximately.
Okay. All right, council, any changes or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion. So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Karen, second by Todd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's forum, move on to approving tonight's consent agenda. Council, any questions about tonight's consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I mean, will we approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion by Todd, second by Paul, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's forum, move on to the communications section. Chairman, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members, administrative staff, appreciate the opportunity to join you. Uh, and formally provide an update from Central County. These are things I would like to do, I think you had Commissioner Remison here last time. I'm trying to do this every quarter. I think it's important that citizens, um, not only see government, local government, working together, but it gives us an opportunity really to hear feedback, to present, keep you up to date with what's happening from the Central County side of things, but also to get feedback on how we can best represent you. Commissioner Remison and I both share Kichai. So, uh, you'll probably continue to do that as long as you'll have us, uh, to switch off and on doing quarterly updates. This is important to us, and I hope you find out you can do as well. I just have two updates I'd like to share. There's a lot of things we're working on, uh, in Central County, particularly in facilities. We have the Conter Crisis Center, new elections building, and a juvenile facility that we're working through. Discussions of the new admin building. Uh, the building that we have been working on the most, that's got the most attention, is the new psychiatric hospital. I want to give you an update on kind of where we're at, because we really are kind of on the borderline, we haven't even finished this thing up. Uh, last week, the city of Wichita formally approved the rezoning request at McArthur and Meridian for the eleven acres that the psychiatric hospital is going to go on. Uh, now remember, this is a middle youth between the county and the state. Uh, so this will be a state psychiatric hospital. Uh, we felt the need, in order to move this along quickly, uh, we felt the need that if we took the architectural and the construction piece and actually did the project and then divested it over to the state, we felt like that was the best opportunity to move this project along quickly. We felt like urgency was, was important in this matter. Uh, so we're doing it, we're handling all the construction and everything, and we'll divest this over to the state to be the state psychiatric hospital, much like what we have in Marred and Osasuna. Two weeks, I'm sorry, three weeks ago, the state of Kansas approved moving from fifty beds up to a hundred and four beds. So this one now will be a hundred and four bed facility. Fifty percent of these beds will be designated for acute treatment of those that have been involuntarily assigned, uh, voluntarily assigned, uh, for psychiatric, uh, evaluation and treatment. The other fifty percent of these beds are going to be, uh, for those that are waiting mental health evaluations, competency evaluations. Those that are, many of them sitting in the Central County jail, uh, that are waiting on a competency evaluation to go to the line. Uh, but some people know, but not many know, that there have been, uh, people sitting in the Central County jail upwards of over four hundred and fifty days, uh, waiting for competency evaluations, because there's so much space in Marred. So, we've been, since I've been in office, which is a year and a half now, we've been talking about this loudly, this need to, to free up more space in psychiatric hospitals, to free up, uh, and release kind of this bottleneck that's occurring at the Central County jail. Talked to Sheriff Easter, he will tell you that, uh, and I'm sure your police chief, my technologist as well, that about seventy-five percent of people that are sitting in the Central County jail have either a mental health disorder or a substance abuse disorder, or both. Uh, so this is a significant need in this community to free up the, uh, uh, the capacity of the Central County jail for the things that it is designed to do. Right now, the Central County jail is the largest mental health hospital in the state, and it's not designed to do that. So, this is a big deal for the, for the community, it's a, it's a definitive need. All again, this is going to be a seventy-five million dollar project. Uh, and we'll break around hopefully here in the next couple of months. Uh, so, uh, we're excited about this, this is a big deal. Think about the whole behavioral health ecosystem. County's doing con care crisis, which is twenty-four seven, uh, substance use treatment, mental health treatment, crisis treatment, we have the psychiatric hospital coming, we have bio-med campus coming in downtown, which will start, which will help the pipeline. City of Wichita is working on the MAC, which is, uh, in cooperation with the county, which is for homeless services. So, if you really look at all the things that are happening in behavioral health, I think that over the course of the next couple of years in our community, uh, we'll be able to standard nationally how we collaborate together to deal with some of these big issues, so. Wanted to update you on psychiatric hospital and the progress there. The second thing, I wanted to be, update you on, uh, something you're likely now starting yourself, which is the twenty-twenty-five budget discussions. Uh, we started those in March and April. Uh, forty-six departments in Central County government, just shy of three thousand employees, uh, so it's a lot of work. County government, city governments are different. Um, you know, we're conduits of the state in many regards. Sixteen of our forty-six departments are conduits of the state, we're a political subdivision of the state. And at the county, at Central County, all five commissioners sealed their presentations from all forty-six departments. Uh, so this has been a big, big lift, uh, and a formative lift. I have three goals, um, personally, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking on behalf of the commission, but, uh, for myself and our district. Uh, the first is staffing stability. We've got to be able to staff, uh, have staffing stability in government services, particularly public safety. It's about fifty percent of what we do, the Central County government. When I ran for office, uh, con care was down to a hundred full-time employees, the sheriff was down to a hundred and twelve employees, starting wage in the Central County firefighter was fourteen dollars and sixty cents. Uh, nine-one-one in November of twenty-twenty-one was at sixty-one percent staffing, as they take eleven hundred calls a day. I'm just, EMS had lost a third of their paramedics since twenty-nineteen. Uh, we had significant staffing instability, and it was impacting our capacity to perform service, frankly, particularly, uh, emergency service. Um, so, that has all changed in the last two years. Uh, we're at about ninety-four percent staffing in County One, uh, particularly in our public safety department. So a lot of that is compensation, but most of it is just strategic efforts, so, uh, we're going to continue. Not all the work is done in staffing stability, but it matters greatly. So, that's top of my list. The second is modernizing some of these departments, EMS, nine-one-one, and Central County Fire in particular. Talk about EMS, uh, you know, thirty percent of their calls do not result in a transport to a hospital. Yet we send two paramedics and an ambulance to every single call, at the cost of three hundred to four hundred and fifteen dollars per trip. Uh, so thirty percent of these calls are not resulting in a, in a transport. We're working on a model called community, uh, paramedic model, uh, where we can actually send someone out a sprinter van, a paramedic in a sprinter van, um, if it's not going to, especially for the high users that call frequently. Also looking at nine-one-one, we're going to have, uh, specific dispatches for fire, police, um, uh, and other services there, and actually expanding the, the horizon that they have there at nine-one-one to do more and to have more specialty. And then also in fire, we're actually working on, uh, provider pay, advanced provider pay, which were, in the fire district in particular, which Kichai is a proud member of, thank you, uh, we want to make sure that these firemen are also paramedics, they're the first on scene. If they can start administering medicine as a paramedic, it adds more value to the fire district and to their services. So, we're going to begin an advance, probably advocating for an advanced provider pay to make more of our firefighters paramedics, so. Uh, so that's what I'm working on, those are three of my many, many, many priorities in this budget. Uh, a couple of last announcements on the budget. We had a budget roundtable last week, a few people from Kichai was there, it was fantastic. Uh, I hope they agree. We have another budget roundtable for the public schedule, June fourth. This is at Campus High School, very interactive, a lot of discussion, a lot of feedback. Manager Tom Stoltz will present his recommended budget to the commission on July the tenth, and then we will vote on August twenty-first to adopt the budget, so. We're moving down that, uh, we're moving down the road pretty quick, so. That's it, two quick announcements, uh, and updates that I wanted to make sure you're going to move on, and happy to stand for questions, or, or get some insight of how you'd like me to best represent what's going on here in Kichai.
Well, thank you. Um, I appreciate it, council, any questions before I go there? Ask him one thing.
Bring the funding for the seventy-five million, does Central County provide that, or is that split with the state?
Great question. So, about twenty-five million of that number is, as a spark grant that the county, an Harper grant that the county received from the state of Kansas. Uh, so we utilize that spark grant for this project, the rest is state funded. It's all state.
I was hoping you'd touch on maybe care for every family.
Yeah, great. So, um, I'd love to touch on care for every family. We don't, Central County government isn't involved directly in the foster care system. Um, that's mostly a state function through DCF, but many times Central County government gets, uh, we, we have to deal with the afternact of the failing system, um, mostly in juvenile offenders, juvenile detention facility, con care, uh, we have to deal many times with the afternact of the system with the failing families and failing children. So, I've been, on a personal level, been very active in the foster care community for seven or eight years now. We're collaborating efforts, this has to be a collaborative effort in this community. So the county has been hosting data logs with DCF, uh, which Madam Mayor is very much involved with, um, to bring more awareness of the foster care issues to this community. Truly believe that we care to achieve health in our community, and that we have healthy families and healthy kids. So this is why it really matters deeply for me as a county commissioner. Uh, there's a new collaborative and a new effort, uh, coming, uh, with healthy families, um, that Madam Mayor is very much familiar with. And what we're trying to do is basically engage the faith community, the business community, the nonprofit community, and create a new continuum of care, uh, which will actually collaborate all of these organizations and all these individuals that work in, have touch points in the foster care system, and try to collaborate them better, uh, to better serve these families and kids. So this is a lift that's happening right now, we've been working on it for about a year now. Uh, it's not a part of Central County government, we need to be clear. The property tax dollars are not going to do this, um, but this is something that I'm deeply passionate about. I think it's something that's important to this community, so, thank you for asking.
Thank you, very important. Any other questions, council?
The last thing I would just say is that we experience the same problems you're experiencing in Kichai and other cities, is the cost of government's increasing, mostly because of compensation. I talk a lot about the, the need, uh, for us to share more services, um, and functionally consolidate the departments where it's needed. I'm not an overall consolidation person, I, I, I believe the county government has its place, but I want to limit the role of county government to empower the cities to do exactly what we need to do. But we need to share more services, there's significant opportunities to share services, to create efficiencies, and to lower the cost of government to our taxpayers, and, um, so I, I invite Kichai, and Madam Mayor, you've been involved in these conversations, Matt, who talked, uh, on some of these things, where there's opportunity to share services and collaborate and partner, I think we should do it. And, so you'll always have an open ear with me on opportunities to work better with Kichai, so.
Well, I appreciate you, and I, you always take my calls, so, I, I appreciate all the conversations that you have with us, so thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate the opportunity.
I want to say thank you. Um, it's on my report, one of the things I did this month, when I was at the KS GFOA symposium, and, um, Commissioner Maggie was one of the presenters, and at the end of his presentation, it was very exciting to be a part of, where they honored one of their staff with the excellence in public service award.
Michelle Shur.
And it was just an awesome experience to be a part of that, how they surprised her, how everybody, the
All commissioners, ladies and gentlemen.
Public officials were there, all the staff came out, and it was, so, I appreciate that I got to experience that.
Yeah, me too.
Maggie did a really great presentation.
That's great, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Chairman.
You mean, thank you, I appreciate that too.
All right, um, next item is Kichai civic groups, flash committees, and Kichai civic groups of committees, here's. Seeing them, we'll move on to Kichai good news. Council, do you have any Kichai good news? Scott, do you have Kichai good news?
Well, it's kind of good news, I think, for everybody, that's kind of goes back to the previous ones, I think.
Sure.
I'm excited that the Kichai fair now has their logo and ready to go, so we're just starting to get the buttons here real quick, but it is, Kichai is totally awesome.
Totally awesome.
I'm going to, all right, for just a pinch on this, I'm very excited that, um, the artwork was done by my daughter. So she did it several years back when she was still very active in the fair, she's no longer being, what, I mean, she's in Missouri, but it was, she was very excited to be back to be a part of it, but it's her loss.
It is totally awesome, and the summer fair is June twenty-second, and from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty, correct? Yeah, eight-thirty to twelve-thirty, at the Kichai City Park. All right, my Kichai good news is Sunnydale Garage Sale is going on until Saturday, and they will be open from seven AM to six PM, and tomorrow it is fifty percent off. So go over and get fifty percent off on some good goodies. Um, and then the Sunnydale Community Center also is opening their library, and that opens next week on Tuesday. So, um, go for the, uh, ribbon cutting, I believe it's at ten AM? Hold on, I have it in my phone. I have it, hold on. Sorry, I wasn't prepared for this one. Um, it is at, I have no idea, they didn't put it on that one, I'll have to look it up. I believe it's at ten AM, so, uh, Tuesday, twenty. Yes. All right. Oh, go ahead, you go.
Kichai Garage Sale will be, um, Saturday, June eighth.
We're having lots of events here in Kichai, we're here, on it. Any other Kichai good news that I need to highlight? Oh, well, we also have Movies in the Park on the thirty-first, see? We have all of them. Uh, so Movies in the Park on the thirty-first, have you decided on a, on a movie yet?
Uh, I believe it's Zootopia.
Zootopia, and Kendra's all upset, because it's not Shrek. All right, well, uh, we'll close Kichai good news and move on to public comment. Demi, do we have any public comment?
Uh, Johnny Harris.
Okay, Johnny.
Johnny Harris, uh, one oh nine West Timberwalk Street, Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. With a five-minute time limit, this will be a lot of information real quick, and I won't get time to expand upon the points included here. I've created a packet for each one of you with excerpts from the Arts and Business District Master Plan. You can read it in its entirety on the city's website. Included here is a well-defined and detailed information for the forward-faced project breakout plans, including the Kichai Oliver Intersection Project. Page five in the master plan, I've highlighted the bullet points. I've also included the original revised and new conceptual intersection maps with highlighted descriptions of each map as they relate to the Kichai Oliver Intersection Boundaries. With notice section following the distribution of the new conceptual maps on four twenty-five twenty-four, and with three weeks until the next council meeting, plus a timeline indicating an obvious construction start date, there is urgency of bringing forward tonight's points to be addressed. Please flip to the first map. From the original concept map, the project has not aligned with definitions of this phase as the northern boundary is to be north to just north of the southern driveway to Park Art Glass, two hundred and thirty-five feet. On the next map, revised concept, I have noted that there is removal of, of sidewalks on the north and south sides of Kichai Road. I thought the project was to stop just west of Foreman, as in the original concept, but according to the project documentation, it is east to the vacant parcel property line, two hundred and thirty feet, which brings this section into alignment with the boundary given. The next map just highlights the scope of the project again. Now please turn to the first new conceptual map distributed four twenty-five twenty-four to the city council. On this map, we see sidewalk removal added to the intersection project that is outside the scope of the project as defined in the Arts and Business District Master Plan. Secondly, we see that the sidewalks have been removed from the southern Kichai neighborhood, southwest Kichai neighborhood on the south side of Kichai and west side of Alver. These sidewalks should have priority in this intersection project, as this is the only opportunity for this neighborhood to have sidewalks connecting to the Arts and Business District. Turning to the second new conceptual map, highlights two areas I just spoke about, and the inclusion of a sidewalk extension and a side significant crosswalk, in which all was done as part of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar redesign request by former city administrator Schraub from four thirteen to twenty-three, and a council four zero approval. This request included additional lighting, pedestrian crossing for a future city park, which has not been approved nor being discussed currently, as she indicated she wanted an elevator on the property, which was shared with the council on seven thirteen to twenty-three. The field at South Anderson is outside of the Arts and Business District boundaries, and access to it should not be included in this intersection project. In addition, it was indicated that there would be decreased streetscape and sidewalks would be as wide as possible due to rising project costs. Had that hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of public monies not been spent on a redesign that is outside the parameters of the business district definition, these monies could potentially have been used for streetscaping, artwork, and other verification of the southern entry into the city of Kichai. The new conceptual maps do not align with the Arts and Business District parameters for the Kichai Oliver Intersection Project. And if the project was going to include any area outside of the scope of this project, I would hope the city council would have considered installing new sidewalk up to the Kichai Square Shops, the development plans are active, so that this business area would have been included in the desirable walkable Arts and Business District. I hope each one of you will take time to study these materials, ask questions, and re-align the intersection project to honor the Arts and Business District maps or plans, intention and definition for this intersection project. These new maps do not represent what the residents thought they were voting for when they taxed themselves the one percent sales tax. The expectation would be that the intersection project would be what's in the Arts and Business District Master Plan, scale for inflation, of course. I ask that you take swift action to correct these details, request a workshop rescheduled to discuss the project, and for detail on the project to be shared with the public. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other? Thank you very much, we will close public comment. Move on to old business, we have no old business, move on to new business. We no longer have any new business. Move on to council reports, council, any new reports? Well, I have mine. Um, pre-screen, so I went to the pre-screening of the movie Possum Trot, which is, um, coming out on July fourth. Um, I had the ability to go to the Orpheum Theater and take part in this movie. Um, this movie is about a town in Texas, um, and they decided to do the unthinkable and take every kid in a sixty-mile radius who was in foster care, some of the hardest kids who can't be placed. And, um, they supported each other as a community to, um, get all of these children in, in a safe and stable home. Um, the movie is based on a true town in Texas, and the incredible person who it's, um, about is named Bishop Martin, and he is a pastor from Possum Trot. And he actually came to the showing here at the Orpheum, and I've had the opportunity to meet him, and, uh, his story is incredible. So, that movie does launch officially in theaters on July fourth, however, they do have showings at all of the Wichita theaters on Juneteenth, so I would highly encourage everybody to come, so. Um, and all of the proceeds do go to, um, helping foster care, so, throughout the country. So I highly encourage that, and it is a beautiful and very, very well-done story, and it's super accurate to what the system actually is currently. Um, the next thing I had to part in is SCAC, or the Central County Association of Cities, on, uh, that was May fourth, and, uh, council member Baldridge went with me, and so did, uh, city administrator, uh, Genzey. At this meeting, we discussed, um, RRHIDs. Um, I cannot go into as much detail as they did, because it is a very, very complicated process that will take lots and lots of smarter people than me to explain it, um, so I won't try, but, uh, Central County has been looking into this, um, they had a, um, proposal from Goddard, and so they're developing policy around this. So this will come back up, Ross, all, so this may be something that council members do want to look into, um, to familiarize themselves with what RHRID is. Um, they also talked about their budget process, and like Chairman Baby stated, the last roundtable is on June fourth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty at Campus High School. Um, I did have the opportunity to watch the roundtable on Central County's YouTube, uh, page. It is not the same feeling as being there, um, but I, I'm definitely going to try to go to the second one. Um, but it, they do have really good information, and I know that, uh, city administrator Genzey did, uh, send it to council to watch, and it is a good, high-level overview of what the county does and how they budget, um, so I would highly encourage you to watch that. The next, uh, meeting I attended was REAP, or the Regional, er, Regional Economic Area Partnership, we're trying to change the name, I promise, uh, on five-nine-two-four, uh, and I went with city administrator Genzey to that as well. Uh, they focused on the legislation and, um, the end of the session. However, end of session's not happening anymore, they're going to have a special session, so, unfortunately for them. Uh, they discussed the priorities, um, how some of our initiatives that we had, uh, put as priorities in our legislative agenda for REAP had, uh, been successful or had made progress in certain committees, which was all encompassed to the fact that we had shared priorities with Wichita, Central County, uh, Mental Health Substance Abuse Coalition, we all had similar messages, and that did go further for the legislators to really understand what Wichita and Central County wanted from them. They ha, also had a woman there who was speaking on behalf of the Kansas Leadership Center, and she went over a high-level overview of what the Kansas Leadership Center does. Um, they do some really amazing work, and I've taken multiple classes from them and graduated from the KLC program. Um, the last meeting that I attended, and I know I attend a lot of things, um, the K two fifty-four strategic planning meeting, somehow I ended up becoming co-chaired this meeting, this, this organization again, and, um, so I am on the strategic planning, uh, team, and we are now working on how we set our goals for our association, things like, we feel are important, our safety, advocacy, education, and marketing. And we're in early discussions on how we set goals for that, and how we're going to work towards those specific items throughout the association. So hopefully more to come, and, um, how you guys can get involved as well. And that's all I have, I swear. We will move on to staff reports. First up?
First up is public works.
Welcome, Thomas. I love your rainbow shirt.
Oh, thanks. Sorry, sorry, the way I looked, uh, right on real quick, I was quite dirty and muddy, so, this is what I threw on real quick to get back up here in time.
No way.
Didn't breathe a cleaning guy would like me walking in here tonight.
Probably not.
So I think y'all have the staff report in front of you. Um, we're finally starting to see it in to the gas relocation project. Um, we have about seven service lines to put in, yard lines to people's homes. Um, all the gas mains are currently in. Um, the final stage here is getting those last seven in and to, uh, probably get the steel lines that run throughout time disconnected. Um, since I wrote the report, I know that every G three shout, they're planning on being in to start moving poles first of, first of June. Um, so we kind of want to get out of the way as quick as possible. So, this, getting this closer to getting that, getting there. Um, we moved the city park twice, um, moved City Hall four times, started moving on the road driveways. Takes considerable amount of time. Um, we had all the gas and water meters located roughly sixty locates since the last report, so it locates, they, they look like there are nothing on there, but it locates, take about an hour or two, so that's sixty hours that somebody was spent out there, if not more. Uh, but we also cleaned the fire beds around City Hall, cleaned them up a little bit, that way we can work towards that. Uh, we did also purchase new lumber for the bridge, and hopefully, we get this project done, and we'll be looking at the bridge, boards all the way across it, so, um, other than that, kind of just keep on trying to truck through and get this done, so it'll probably be, like, at the end of the tunnel.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for running back up here. We appreciate you. Council, any questions for Thomas, I know he wants words, he can come back if we need him to, or y'all from the back? I'm seeing, I'm, thank you, Thomas. All right, cheers.
Good evening, so, uh, kind of kicking things off and discussing moving the park, officer, that's been hit, so we're going to inform that first. Uh, we're kicking that off, fortunately I will be in attendance for our relocation throughout that week, but, uh, we've got people in place to take care of your really needs and pop on an old bunch up with that. Um, been a blessing, uh, some of that equipment that we purchased, but we also do further use, uh, in our community, especially with the Kichai Fair, uh, Miss Baldridge, did you email us, send actions required, so. The, uh, conditional offer that was extended to the certified officer out of Colorado, uh, fortunately he had, uh, three other offers, um, decided to take up with Newton. Uh, beautiful thing about that is, though, we have people that want to work here in Kichai, so we've got another officer who will be giving a conditional offer, and, uh, well, I can't speak too far here, we have to have our interview next week, but, um, that's on the horizon, so, uh, good things there. Um, discussing traffic enforcement programs, uh, Quicker Ticket, as you commonly see and know, is in full effect, so we'll have officers out, uh, working traffic, uh, traffic situations and that stuff. I'd love to go through, uh, another week and a half or so, and, uh, that's all funded by KDOT, so, um, that is part of the Kichai pocket for the So that is kind of a Keychak pocket for the overtime on that program. I've got a couple of things I want to add here, kind of adding, I took some notes on the way over here. KC Just Audit, we got that coming up in August, which is basically where the state comes in and monitors our NCIC warrants, stolen vehicles, stolen firearms, those kind of things, make sure things is good to go. We've already done a self-audit, we're still in good shape on that, so we're not too concerned on that. One point of concern for us, though, is call volume. I did do a quick looks, and we're pushing into month number six now in the year. Last year, at the end of the year, we had four hundred calls per service, per incident, if you will. This month, right now, for this year alone, we're sitting at nine hundred. So to give you an idea of what we're hitting on there. So officers busy, more officers we have on duty, more productivity, so even more self-issuing things. Maybe didn't get reported last year because of lack of staff, and they're now getting reported and found, so. Definitely busy, but we're moving in the right direction, so. Any questions?
What is your highest call, right now? What call do you get the most often right now?
The call we get the most often right now is probably the most dangerous situations, which are pretty dangerous. Luckily enough, we've got support in the communities, but right now that is our number one. Followed up by that is probably disturbances with juveniles. I can't really go into many details on that, but we've got the best utilities, so.
Understood. Any other questions, council? I'm seeing none. Thank you, chief.
Alright, I appreciate it.
Alright, next is planning zoning, stormwater, code enforcement, whatever you do, Dustin.
Council, thank you for coming out to see me tonight. Zoning, we had three cases heard at the last meeting, and two of them will be coming to you the first meeting of June. One of them was tabled. And there was another case that was applied for, which will also be heard with the table one at the planning commission in June. IT-wise, the phone system has been installed. We've been hearing good things. There are a few issues. As an example, I was on the phone with Adobe Support, trying to get things worked out, and the young lady on the other end could not understand me. Said I was cranking out, so I don't know if it's a hardware issue within our network closet or if it's outside the building or not. That is something that I'm going to have to take a look at, maybe get DOS out here to also look at. The one phone that we were having issues with have gone down dramatically after Teresa swapped out a cable for it. So we're looking better in that department. That is one of the only phones that I know that were having an issue with. Stormwater, I attended the Clean 21 meeting in Newton earlier this month, and there were discussions about all kinds of stuff, with public involvement, participation, how to get the public involved, issues with contractors, and wanting to know if consulting firms could attend our meetings, which is no big deal. And KDHE is making some changes to the way the MSP is handled and maybe audited. They're, it's a lump-hate relationship with the point system that we have across the state. It works for some communities, other communities it does not. Code enforcement, I've had a lot of complaints about tall grass, junk in the driveways, things of that nature. Those people have been contacted, steps have been taken. I do want to remind everyone in the community that it's okay to talk to your neighbor. If you do feel uncomfortable talking to your neighbor, I'm the guy to come see. But I try to encourage people to talk to their neighbors first and foremost, see what's going on, see if there's some type of joint action that can be taken to help each other out. I do want to get onto the website and put services for assistance on there, for lawn care or home repair or something. So if you have any suggestions, please email them to me. Be glad to add them onto the website or make some type of list that people can just get on there and find a bunch of help. Yep. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Administration, I'm just assuming it's all of you.
Financially first.
So, Len Hopplewell is still a big thing. We are pushing to get, make sure we have it done by October deadline. Debbie has been working diligently. She's been working with Thomas, that is an ongoing project. He's all been in the office, been working on our weather training, our monthly security, and has to know, if they watch the news, that's very important, and so it's really good for us to stay up on that. Debbie's attended the IIMC, which is International Institute of Municipal Clerks on both settings. She's looking at doing monthly classes through those. As I said earlier, I attended the Kansas Janeway Compliance Officers Association symposium on May 2nd. That was very helpful. May 7th, we went to the municipal compliance class that's put on in Newwood. That was extremely helpful. What's not on there is what I attended yesterday, which was put on by the Kansas Department of Administration on budgets. The new budget workshop or budget work sheet has just been published. That will be the format that we have to use to do our budget to report to the state, going over those guidelines. That was immensely helpful. As she kept saying, that's the best seventy-five dollars that we could spend. It was very, very helpful. Also reaching out to Cedro County. Deputy City Clerk was there, and so having that connection and being able to talk with those, that's very good for us to have. Chris has thought up with our backdoor device testing. She's been working diligently on that. We're having a very first deadline. And so we will be having another round going out, letters going out to those to bring people into compliance. We did the ARPA, we did get our ARPA report done in time of the matter. That's not always the easiest thing to change for personnel, because of teams that stayed in it last year. And then Chris has also, she's applied for IIMC Certified Master Clerk certification. That is a process, so she's applied for it, so she will start that process if you need to ask her. And I didn't put it on here, but yes, we have also been working diligently towards getting budget and identifying priorities, working with the departments on some of the equipment needs. There's a lot of that ones, I think that's something. All geared up?
Awesome. Sounds like you're busy.
Well, I'm not going to cover everything, because a lot of the other departments included. What I have, I will touch on a couple of things. Gas line relocation has been huge, and Thomas and his guys have been working so hard to get that done. I know things like mowing sometimes get pushed off, but it's so imperative that we get that done as part of the project. And some of the weather we've had, they've had a couple extra days where they can get their trucks cleaned up and shop cleaned up and all that good stuff, so I know that helped them and helped with getting stuff mowed. But his guys just work extremely hard out there on this, and it's much appreciated. We applied for the NFC, the National Fitness Coalition grant for the park, which provides a kind of a self-contained fitness court for the park. And we will meet with them again next week, or I will meet with them again next week. The grant provides thirty to fifty thousand dollars to implement one of those fitness courts in our park. They're super cool. I think I provided some renderings or pictures of what they have. Somebody may have seen that. But as soon as we find out if we're going to be awarded that grant, we were eligible to apply. I applied, and we should find out next week, so. I don't know what happens, I'll provide some more information, so that's exciting. Teresa and I attended a ratings call as part of the funding process for the Keychak Oliver project. That's where they look over the city's financials as a whole. Make sure we're not, are basically debt to income, revenue ratios are okay, and we received very good results from that. A double A minus rating, which is excellent for smaller cities. The highest rating is a triple A. I don't know of any small city that has a triple A. But triple A minus is very good, which helps us in our interest rates when it comes to those.
I'd like it when the attorney shakes her head and goes, uh huh.
We met with a representative from the Kansas Municipal Gas Association, myself, Thomas, and Teresa, about gas rates. So we will be looking at maybe adjusting our rate scale, make sure that we're competitive, and we're providing the best rates and service to our citizens. So that will be coming up as well. I attended the monthly meeting that we have scheduled. Just attended an ongoing meeting between us and Valair. He and I just talked about things that are going on between the cities. And we always have good conversations. We're continuing to build that relationship and just working on a lot of good things together. So it's a big change for what it is today, so.
And one thing, brush dump is open this weekend.
It is, yep.
Alright, I wanted to make sure we called that out. Brush dump is open this weekend.
Yeah, Thomas came to me Monday, I think, and said he didn't realize how much tree damage there was from these high winds that we had earlier in the week from the storms. So his guys are going to be at the brush dump from eight o'clock to ten o'clock?
Eight to ten.
Yeah, eight to ten on Saturday, for residents to dump their brush up there, maybe tree limbs or anything that they have. And of course, that's open to Valair as well, because we already had an agreement with them, so. I know we have citizens that are utilizing their rec center, and we know that we have their citizens utilizing our dump site, so that's a good thing for both of us. And last but not least, zoning, planning and zoning agendas. I, it's my understanding, council maybe has not been getting those, but we have made some changes. I talked to Dustin, and you guys will start getting those agendas part of the meeting. So I apologize if there was a hiccup in the pack, but you're back on the list, and you will be seeing us, so you're already going to know what's going on. So if you have any questions on those, get ahold of myself or Dustin, and we can probably answer those questions for you. Last but not least, just a heads off to all the department heads, all the employees in the city. It's been busy times, and I appreciate everyone's support.
I agree. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, Thomas?
Hi, Matt. One more thing. I missed it earlier, it just popped up. I just found out. So June 17th, Pearson will be in here to mail and overlay, sue, sue court, and sue circles. You guys approved that last council, I believe. I wasn't sure. They wanted to get in as quick as possible. So I figured maybe they'd be in like this week. Then I heard middle of June, so I'm like, oh, that ain't very quick. But they will be there. Hopefully they won't be there longer than a week. So they'll do one side, then do the other. That way we can get the street redone and overlaid before they start the downtown and start seeing extra traffic on those streets.
Perfect. Thank you for your diligence on that and getting us the information as soon as possible. We appreciate it. Any questions for any of the departments down there?
I have one question.
Of course.
I have a question about the streetness equipment at the park.
Yeah.
Did you know if the grant will cover the cost, the total cost of that, or just a portion of it?
Not the total cost. Thirty to fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
Is what they will contribute to it.
Okay, okay. And I was in the day initial meetings. We can look at other ways to fund it too, apart from just the grant. So we've been looking at that.
Different sponsorships.
Yep.
They will help us with that. They will help us with looking for grants to help fund the additional portions of that. And just off the top of my head, I think it's about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that we would have to chip in. And then our, our goal, if we were awarded that grant money, would be to fund a few grants or local donations, that type of thing, and offset those costs.
Could they help us at all with grants for playground equipment?
That's not their area. It's a different.
Alright, this is.
Yeah, it's just a specific for this. Okay.
Program. This program's through Blue Cross and Blue Shield, through the National Fitness.
Just while I ask the question.
Nope, you're good. Alright, any other questions? Seeing this, alright. Move on to executive session. Now I'd like to press out. Yes.
Now, Mayor, I move we go into executive session. The subject to be discussed during executive session is non-elected personnel. The justification for closing the meeting is discussion relating to non-elected personnel matters. The time of first, which the opening room shall begin, is 7:55 PM in this meeting.
Go ahead and hear a second. I have a motion by Todd, second by Kendra. All in favor of the act?
Aye.
Harry's for O. Move to executive session. Harry's four oh. Move to executive session. During the regular meeting, I want to remind everyone that persons in this meeting open statute. No binding action was taken by the city council while in executive session. Todd, will you please read the other one when you get it on your phone again?
This is gonna happen one time.
Yep.
Madam Mayor, I move we go into executive session. The subject to be discussed during the executive session is non-elected personnel. The justification for closing the meeting is discussion relating to non-elected personnel matters. And the time and place which the opening meeting shall resume is eight oh five P M in the City Council Chamber.
Go ahead and hear a second. I have a motion by Todd, second by Kendra. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Harry's four oh. We're in executive session. As we return to regular meeting, I want to remind everyone that persons to open Kansas.